All right, I see six o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's a regular select board meeting, Thursday, February 1st. Welcome to February, everyone. First thing is set an adjust agenda. Do you have any changes?
No, I'm on my end.
Great. All right, hearing non-communication in the audience. Bill, are you communicating from the audience? Or are you hearing item one on our agenda?
I'm here to keep an eye on the EWP, just as a citizen and as a resident.
Great. Sounds good.
If you want any more resources, I have a new resource.
So we're talking about that on item one, right?
Yeah.
I have email from the engineer that reduced the cost at 609.
But if you're here for that, let's wait, hold that off until we get item one.
Thank you.
All right. Next is select board to approve minutes from last time, which was January 18th.
I can motion to approve the regular select board meeting minutes on January 18th. Second?
Any comments, questions on the minutes?
There wasn't here, so...
Oh, oh, that's right, you missed it.
I missed the meeting only for 10 years.
Yes.
Sorry, I just realized is that there's one letter missing in Alex Jum's name.
Which, what letter?
Alex Jum, there's a J.
Yep. Oh, okay.
I see it.
Do you, okay, so you, are you moving that we approved the minutes with that one change?
Yes.
All right.
I don't second that.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, and carries, thank you. We have, oh, we have an extension over there from the captain one.
Well, do I actually have to extend, or, I mean?
I know, it's all up to you, carries.
It's fine, I should say aye.
You say aye, all right, so motion passes. Thank you. Next is town manager report given by Mr. Upson.
So, we had a funding meeting, funder's meeting today about moving the fire station. So we got some guidance on how to proceed with that. And it's similar to the wastewater plant. So it's let FEMA do their thing. And the money that we get back to fix the plant, we can hold off and use, or, the fire station, we can hold off and potentially use in a, in a move for the, for the project. But that's, I, I question that.
Yeah.
Because we have to spend the money to get the money back.
Right.
So I have to have the conversation with our PDMG, which we just got assigned a new one, which you know, he's getting up to speed. We got our first debris project obligated. So basically, that's been checked off and we should be getting funds for that. We have, the next two that are really close are the temporary bridges. I need to get permits from the Army Corps of Engineer and State River Corridor folks, which I spoke with both of them. And they know the circumstances, they're doing this for many communities. So it's basically send them the information. The Fisher-Foley Bridge is not a big deal because we didn't work in the river. The Tucker Brook Bridge, we've gotta do some measurements and some additional documentation for, Tom's working on that, I talked to him today about that. We had a meeting with the EWP program. Eric, you were on that. And no town that he knows of, other than one small project, has ever used public funds for the matches. And we can move forward with the three projects.
Okay, we're, you're going right into item one there.
Oh yeah, that's right. Let's, let's wait, I have that in here. I got an assessment from, I got a appraisal from Matt on that property down there. It's, he, I can share it with you, he just sent it to me tonight. He used two parking lots that sold in St. Jay and then one other small parking lot for, for comps.
Oh, this is for the?
That parking lot.
Were they parking lots that had, previously had buildings on them?
I'm not entirely sure.
Because it seems like there'd be some infrastructure there now, or no?
I think that whatever was there was-
It's gone.
Was filled in.
Oh, okay.
I mean, there's probably a sewer pipe in there somewhere.
Yeah.
But maybe not. And... Oh, on the fire department, we talked with community facilities. And then there's a, the federal government through community facilities might be approving a disaster supplement. That's kinda what people are banking on right now. And as morbid as this sounds, it's good that we had the Maui fires. Because they're gonna do a disaster supplement and it, it covers all the desert, all the FEMA disasters in the year. So...
Is this moving at a federal, like, federal level?
Yeah.
Federal pace.
And so, I, not like, I got a, didn't get the best feeling from our, our partners in the federal side of things for future funding.
Oh.
I think everybody's in a holding pattern right now.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things that are happening sub, what did, wouldn't they, what is the term they use, like underground?
Subterranean.
Subterranean. Subterranean?
Yeah.
Subcutaneous.
Under skin, yeah, yeah. But just, it's kind of, we're in a holding pattern, it's an election year and the House and Senate aren't really focused on the Northeast.
Anything.
Yeah.
They haven't even really passed on budget, have they?
Right. Well, they're, they're going from like month to month on it, yeah. So there's that. So if we're, and then they, they talked about the bond bank and low interest loans.
Yeah.
Wasn't there, wasn't there some sort of update with the MTAP also in the sense?
That's, they mentioned that, that, the MTAP, that's what we're using. And that's with NBDA.
Right.
And that's gonna be, that's gonna be good.
Yeah.
For, that program's gonna be good for the design and scoping.
Right.
And that's for?
That's for moving, moving the fire station. Yeah. The wastewater plants, it's really its own beast. And that's still, there's still a lot of question marks there. But now that we have our, Paul, Rich and Elliot doing that study, then they'll be able to get a substantial damage determination, which is what we're waiting for. If it's over 51%, that's the magic number. To be able to move, and I think that, back to the fire station, the 51% substantial damage is like the magic number. So then that money gets, we can put in a case that, hey, this is flooded a bunch of times. We, we don't wanna pay to repair this building if it's substantially damaged. And they'll, they'll say either flood, proof it, or move it.
And for moving it ties into feasibility for?
Yeah. Yep, and they're aware of all that. Monday night, I went to a heart address squad meeting and basically continued the conversation. They wanna be a part of the, the planning, but maybe not necessarily putting their building in our buildings. But basically the planning for the campus.
Right.
Yep.
I think that sounds good.
Yep. I think that's it for now. I feel a little scattered.
That's okay. There's a lot going on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, all right.
Do you want, Tom Fadden's not here, do you wanna tell us anything about roads or anything?
They're just, they're, they caught up on some maintenance this, this slow time with, with no snow and, you know, the minor salt, a little bit of salting, but they just caught up, caught up on some maintenance. Tom had an electrical issue on his truck that he fixed. Edward's been down to the plant. We had a, a cat guy come and look at the generator down there. Didn't give us the best prognosis on it in terms of like moving forward. They wanna take the generator head off, which I don't know if we need to do.
The generator to go bad?
Yeah, they wanna take, separate it from the motor and like clean it and re-dip it. And I don't know if we're gonna, for, for about, I think it was like $30,000. So...
Would FEMA cover that?
They would, but if we're gonna be elevating the plant, like that's, again, that's another-
Does it put us towards our 51%?
That, that is a hard part in the plant. That's what I would say, but yeah. Yep. So we talked to them about a portable generator. And then, just with the road crew, they fixed a water leak down on Buffalo Street, down in the old log yard. I don't know if they did that before the last meeting, I don't think, I don't think they did, yeah. So they had a big water leak down there.
They did, they did some pothole work on that though, Rose.
And here too.
Yeah.
Some whole patch stuff.
All right.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
We know if he's ordered the crosswalk paint for the new style of crosswalk.
I'll confirm that.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Next up, Heart of Police Department report.
So we got our snowmobile back, so now we're back up to full strength. We don't have any trails to patrol.
I don't have any, you have a snowmobile without enough snow?
Without the snow. So, taking the advice of Wiz, we did put a speed sign up, one of our battery operated ones that shows your speed, just to kinda control the speed coming through. The town was great putting the post up for us. And I've got a speed sign, we can flip it both ways and get traffic one way or another. So that's good.
Thank you.
The main thing I wanted to talk about is, I've interviewed two people for positions at Heart of Police Department. There isn't, there's an academy that starts in February where you can't get them in Feb, you know, it's too late to get them into that, that class. The next full-time class is in August. So what we've discussed with them is the possibility of going through the part-time academy. There is one that starts in March. So what we would do, the plan would be to put them through the part-time academy, start working through the field training process. And then kinda gauge where they're at and give them a little bit of experience before they actually go into the academy in August. I think, you know, one person is, I say older, but is 40s, the other person is younger, so, early twenties. So we gotta mix the both, I think they're, I think they're both gonna be really good, a good asset to the town. So that's kinda my plan, I kinda need to just run that by the board and make sure that you guys are good with that plan going through with that.
So the way that that impacts the us and, I mean, we kinda, what are we, our main, our main verb is the budget and the town, so I guess in that regard, how does that fit our budget? Explain it to us a little bit.
Well, I think we're down right now on part-timers, we, we've lost full-timers as well, so we're gonna be within the budget with that. The, the drawback to this is, we're gonna have people on the payroll that are not really gonna be good to us until after they're out of the full-time academy. So they'll have to be with somebody the entire time while they're in the part-time. There's a field training process, but there's also, it's a two-week part-time academy, but then there's other classes they have to take after that. So if they're gonna go to the full-time academy, it doesn't make sense to send them to those classes and then have them get it later. And those classes are spread out throughout the year too, so it, it takes a long time to get somebody part-time certified. So that's the balance, where I'm gonna be at. So we'll be within the budget with that, we'll start them out part-time, working a couple days a week with somebody else.
Do we pay for the academy?
We pay for the full-time academy. Generally, we don't pay for the part-time academy.
Well, we pay their salaries during the full-time academy, we don't pay for the certification.
Right.
The academy doesn't cost anything.
It doesn't, it's provided by the state.
Yeah.
Right. It's, what, what the goal of the academy is, they utilize law enforcement officers to teach the academy. So somebody from the town of Hardwick would be down there teaching, so that's our contribution to them. We haven't been down there to the academy. We did have, Andrew did go down a couple times and helped out with a couple of classes after he was certified. But, you know, we need to take a little bit more of an active role in that, but-
And the reason that you would recommend hiring people that we need to train is because we're not getting applications from folks who are fully certified?
Right. And actually, our, our applications for even, we didn't get that many for non-certified, or, non-certified people. So-
So basically, your recommendation is you found a couple people that you think are good, it would be an asset to the town, we invest in them and we, and we've done this in the past, Hardwick's done this for years and years.
Right.
That's our MO.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I guess what I'm asking the town this time is that we actually give them a salary while they're at, the training salary while they're in the part-time class. That's something that's-
As a, as a part-time employee.
As a part-time employee.
And that's within your budget?
That's within the budget. I think it's fair at this point, you know, we're asking them two weeks out to-
I think it makes sense.
Do we still have to do the same, I must still have to have the, like do the official hire through the board, right, to do the?
Be a point officer, theoretically, a point officer.
Once, once they're a law enforcement officer, and that's the catch here, is they're not technically law enforcement officers yet.
So basically, we wouldn't be appointing these?
Till later.
Until after they're certified?
Right. Right. We'll wait until they're actually certified.
As a pedagogical issue, am I right in thinking that if they've been to part-time academy, they will be better positioned to understand what's going on in the full-time academy? That they will be better students?
Yes. That's, that's the thought process, is to give them that part-time academy so that they, you know, it's just two weeks. And then put them out on the road to where they start seeing what's happening and how we work. And then when you go to the full-time academy, it gives you a little bit more of an edge.
Much better context.
It's really like the academy, it should, we should say it, the level, like the level two academy.
Yes.
The part-time throws people off.
Right.
Because it's the certification, so it's the level two certification. And then the full-time is level three certification, so they'll be, you know, level two certified through that.
Well, they won't be level two certified. So this is a level one, level two, the two week is a level one, level two.
Yeah.
Academy, and then you have to take the courses after that to get you to be either level one or level two. So...
But still, they will be, they will be primed to be much better at full-time than they would be without this, this level one and two experience.
Yes.
And it may also, if it doesn't, if it's not a good fit for them-
You learn it early.
We'll know before we invest in them for-
Yeah, another-
Right.
Right.
Seems like a reasonable way to proceed.
Do you need a motion or are you just?
I don't think I need a motion, I just, just, yeah, letting you know.
You've heard us.
Okay. All right. And we're, we're getting through the process right now, obviously, you know, there's background, finishing that up, they've gotta be polygraph, medical, and we've gotta get all that stuff in before they go to the academy.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Paramount work. All right. Next is item one, town manager to give an update on possible match sources for the EWP grant program. This is the one through the National Resource, NRCS, no, Natural Resource-
Conservation, or no, Service, Natural Resource, NRCF.
And so, this is the grant we talked about last time.
Right.
And they had looked at Hardwick and found three places along the river where the bank could be armored to protect property.
Man-made structures.
Yep.
In imminent peril of washing down the river.
Yep.
So this is really an effort for the town to keep proper, to keep properties on the grant list, so we don't have to buy them out in the future.
Yeah.
And so we met with them and there's really, we got one, the Vermont, the relief, what is the Vermont? All these acronyms are making my head spin.
But there's a state agency that could be approached for help with the match, right?
Yeah, the Flood Relief Fund. And then in the, in, according to one of the, the people that work in NRCS, the town has never been the fiscal, they've been the, the grant manager and they've sponsored the projects, but they've never used, they haven't used their town money for the matches. If we reach a certain threshold statewide for damage, which we're getting to that point, the, the percentage goes from 75% to 90%. So that would make our, the sponsor portion less for the pro, the project and, which would be less of a burden on the landowner. So it would really be up to the landowner to come up with the, the match money.
And so I joined that call.
Yeah.
And the other thing, the big takeaway I got from it was that there's really no downside to us entering into the grant agreement because it doesn't, doesn't bind us to doing the work at all.
Right.
It just, it just is like us accepting their proposal. And he said it really, the only time, like, at any point we could drop out up to the point that we engaged and started on construction.
Correct.
So even if we, he said you could even do the engineering, get that hired out and do it, and then, and then back out and then say, oh, that has too expensive.
And could you also, so we're looking at three properties, could only two of those properties do it?
Yes.
And, okay. So it's not binding those landowners to anything?
Nope.
It's just giving them a potential opportunity?
Keeps the door open.
Yep. And it covers the cost of engineering and the, oh, the brunt of the project.
So we just, and we, so we have at least one landowner who's-
Yes.
-wanting to participate in this way.
Yeah.
So it seems like there's not a downside to us accepting the grant agreement.
Right.
And if we have somebody who wants to use it, it's possible all three will wanna use it.
Yep. And we have, there, there was a certified letter that was sent, although I, I thought the certified letter was sent in December. Michael confirmed with me that it was sent in January, late January, so we have until, like, the end of March to decide and get the grant application in. So we're not pushing up against any hard deadlines.
But it seems like we should do it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it seems like there's advantages to just saying, let's do it, right, so we can-
Yes.
Carry on.
Carry on, right?
Yeah.
Bill?
My correspondence reduced the cost at 609. Right now, it's down to 81.4 and the cost sharing is $20,351.
So just to, you know, I think before we get down the road of individual project costs, what we heard on this call was that we ought to accept the full amount because
I agree with that.
All those funds get obligated, and if one project gets less expensive, another project might get more expensive. And so we could have access to the full amount.
To finish my comment, I paused. I believe the word at 609 will protect the state Route 15 dramatically. Because otherwise, that baby's headed right there. And this will, this will fully go down to the island, which will keep that river north of the island when it goes wild.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, yeah, I don't know, I don't think that the trans has been part of this conversation.
No, no, I'm just talking about added value to the town. Because the loss of Route 15, we experienced. And it was pretty serious.
Do you just join us, should we just recap what we said?
Danny?
Because he has some questions about this, for some reason.
Yeah, so... We're, we're gonna, since you're just joining, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Amazing. So, we're on item one, which is the EWP program, the one where NRCS gives us money to protect New River Bank armoring. And what we've just been discussing, Opie and I joined a call with Tracy and his name is Mike.
Michael Pointe.
Michael. From NRCS this week, and what we learned is that there's really no downside to us accepting this grant agreement because accepting it does not commit us to doing any of the work. It just, it just puts, it puts the funds, it commits the funds to us should, should the individual landowners choose to provide the match to do the projects. And so we could do, you know, even if just one landowner wanted to do it, then one could do it, that would be fine, the others could not, they could all do it. So anyway, it just seems like there's no, there's no downside to us accepting the, the grant.
That's great, I would support moving ahead as long as there's no commitment for, you know, you know where my deal is, I don't want Bill to pay for Bob's lane, that's all. So, or Bob will pay for Bill's lane either way. So that's not likely, you know, if we can figure out how to put something in place, I, I support that, for sure.
Yeah, I think that's where we're at. So, I don't know, we could have, have a motion to-
Do you need a motion?
To-
What? So Eric, before, before we need a motion, I'd like to know what we're gonna do, you know, we have a little more, are we just gonna have a general motion for Opie to continue to investigate?
No, I was gonna suggest that we could have a motion for Opie to, for the town manager to sign the grant agreement, but-
Okay.
Because then-
I mean, I'd like to see the grant agreement, wouldn't you like to-
Yeah.
To see it, writing that works out on the hook?
Yeah, and we have, Opie just reported too, that we actually have longer than we thought even to get the grant agreement in, so we could do that next time, that's fine.
It's, I think it's a grant, just a grant application.
Oh, right.
They've done all the-
Application, they just did all the application stuff for us.
And it's like, the next step is, are we gonna, are we gonna actually enroll in the program? And if we're gonna do it, then, then the grant application, I think the grant agreement will come after, I think it's the application they're waiting on.
Okay. So yeah, we can, we can wait till next time, but it, it just is encouraging that-
Uh, yeah, whatever, as long as we know what we're signing, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah, we can-
That's all that I was saying.
We totally do.
Oh, we-
Yeah, so it's good, so it's all good, the program sounds good, sounds flexible. Yeah.
So you want a motion that-
Well, yeah, to-
That we authorize the town manager to sign this grant application?
Application.
To move forward with it.
And move forward with it. Second?
Okay, so, that's great, we have the motion to, to have the town manager sign the grant application. I thought we hadn't seen that last time.
We still have the first meeting.
Yeah.
Can we?
Yeah.
Aye.
Oh.
That, that was just like the basic, that was like just the projects.
Yeah.
What the cost was, what the, the sponsor's share was. And, yeah. Basic information.
Yeah.
I haven't seen any terms.
Okay.
I assume we did that after we-
So it's a premature, the, the application?
We have to submit the application.
I don't think so.
We have to submit the application.
Yeah.
All right, so motion on the table, have the town manager sign the application, NRCS. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's everyone, so, carries, thank you, thank you, thank you for following up and keeping us. Did you wanna say something, Bill?
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
That's how Quakers say, thank you, thank you.
Okay, good. Uh, item two, select board to choose a date and time for a public informational meeting prior to town meeting, has to be after February twenty-fourth, so, uh, a little calendar thing up.
I would like to propose either the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth at five P M, preferably.
So that's Wednesday and Thursday?
Yeah.
Uh, yep?
How about the Thursday, just?
Yeah, Saturday, Friday.
The Thursday, the, cause we usually meet on Thursday?
Leap day?
And leap day, and we want to meet at, you, you want to go at five?
Yes, if we can, on the book days at five, so maybe the twenty-ninth, that's the Thursday.
Yeah.
So, and it's basically just the usual, like, the informational meeting going over the budget before the town meeting, because of the warrant, we have to do that, so.
Yeah.
Should be relatively quick, maybe half an hour, I'm sure, like, we don't usually have a great audience, or a large audience, is what I mean, but yes.
Yeah.
Small.
Yes.
Will it be televised?
Probably we ask, but I think we could ask this. We will ask, no question.
Cause I think other people won't be here, but they went to.
Yeah. So we'll ask HCPV about televising that?
Yes, I'll do that then.
Awesome. So, there were.
So twenty-ninth, February twenty-ninth at five P M, I will get that posted.
Great.
With a couple, I'll get it posted like a month or so, yeah.
Right.
Do we need a motion?
No. Um, awesome, sounds good. Uh, select board reports?
The Downtown Partnership has hired our staff person.
Yay.
John Mueller, he started, he's talking to people downtown, it's all good.
Good.
I saw him walking today. Walking and talking.
Yep. It's good.
The Gazette continues to come out every week, which feels like a minor miracle, every time someone shows up.
Yeah, it's great.
We're getting our act together.
Excellent. Uh, new business or old business?
I just have a question about town meeting.
Yes.
So we talked at our last, after our last town meeting about, um, some things that we could do differently, and Rose and, there were a few other people who were going to come up with some things, I, I wasn't part of it, but it's coming around again. So I don't know if we wanna talk about it in our next meeting, like, if we're, there was talk about, like, doing a dinner, or like having a. Making it a little.
Rose received grant funding for a pre-town meeting program at the civic, I don't know what the details were, but I know that, um.
You mean for last year or for this year?
For this year.
Oh.
Sort of, I think the idea was an educational, explain what town meeting is for people who are not entirely comfortable with the idea, and, you know, just, just, a little bit of history and civics and food.
I know they're, they were doing, gonna do mock town meetings at a couple of the schools, they're still working on that. Um, I can ask, we have a nonprofit meeting, local nonprofit meeting tomorrow down there at noon. The library, Northeast Kingdom Human Services, um, the food pantry, so I'll mention it.
Okay.
Awesome. Any other new business, old business?
Do we have to open up the, um, traffic ordinance or whatever in order to just buy some parking, no overnight parking signs and stuff for the trailhead?
When the next day?
Depot Street? Okay. Then I'll just start, start working on making those requests.
Okay.
I have one small new business, please.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, our, the town's deferred comp plan, which is with State of the Land, recently changed from conditional to empower. So really, the only change for us is that we, um, it's kind of finally made the migration after a year and a half, and so the newest thing is that we have to submit our employees' contributions, um, that we take out of their table via ACH, a wire, we cannot send a check anymore. So, basically, what has happened is, in order for me to do that, um, we have to have the main, turn on the ACH feature to our main operating account in order to make this payment, um, it is still considered electronic payment, we are making electronic payments now. I reviewed our policy for internal controls, and really, nothing would be different, um, but Tanya really wanted, um, you guys to be aware that we were gonna activate this ACH feature on our operating account and sort of have your blessing on it, um, she would feel more comfortable that you knew about this, but the plan really is only to use it, we, we do use direct deposit for payroll, but we're gonna only use this to pay that one vendor, not a bunch of vendors, we'll continue with our normal procedures, but that's, that's, she just wanted you to be aware and kind of have your blessing.
Yep, yeah, and Cheryl still review.
Yeah.
Stuff.
Right, so none of our processes are being changed, we are paying some stuff electronically now, like, you know, Comcast and little things like that, but, um, it'll be reviewed the same exact way, but it's just, they have to turn that on in order for me to go spend it, and it's literally employee deductions that's sitting out with holding account until they're remitting them, so it's, it's pretty, pretty low risk, cause that's really all we're gonna be doing.
Okay, yeah, I think that's it, everybody looks like they're nodding. We get, Danny's saying no. He's nodding.
Just tell her no. Tell her no.
You're being, you're being a pain.
I can mute him.
Um, I just want, so Casey, you're doing payroll now?
Yeah.
Uh, temporarily, while the end is out.
Have, have we explored, um, you know, I'm just wondering if payroll is, in this day and age, a great use of staff time? Or have we explored, um, maybe using, uh, a kind of?
Service?
A payroll service, like, that a lot of people use?
Well, we did look at it a while ago, um, but I think, um, if that time was pretty expensive, like, if we're gonna have, like, we can't really have, like, a, a dedicated person and hire out our payroll, so we have to be, I was hoping to figure that out, um.
I mean, that, that position, that's a position.
Alright.
It's part of her job, not her entire job.
Right.
So if we do that, then we would have to do away with it, basically, she's our HR department, right?
Yeah, so, okay. Yeah, I get it, so it's.
Yeah, we did, we did look at a payroll company a while ago, we had a couple meetings with them, did a demo with them, but when we found out the cost, it was kind of like, almost like the cost of a person, so it was kind of like, yeah, we, we can't, yeah.
Not only the cost, then about a bitch and I here whining from the town guys about their checks and their time and how complicated it is, I don't think we would want that to be external.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying, I know that they, I know, I hear often about, you know, the way that their time works is complex, with snow and tide and top tide and this tide, and then they're often talking about their interactions with the bandit. So you wouldn't want that to be in Indonesia somewhere. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Nope.
We, we need our payroll person to speak English.
Okay.
Her jibberish in case of alcohol.
Uh, alright, well, thanks, thanks for the discussion, I just had to ask a question. Uh, alright, anything else? Let's adjourn, thank you everyone, feel better, Casey.
Thanks, have a good night.
You too.